An issue was filed Friday to amend the Hollywood Park Pacific Plan to include a sports entertainment district.
Folks, put those shovels and pails away because the owner of the Rams has fired a nuclear bomb in your plans. If Cronky builds a stadium, NFL football is closer to returning to Los Angeles than it's been in about 15 years.
Today is a celebration of the IGAAP project, Inglewood Growing Arts Project.
It's so appropriate that this mural is called Inglewood Stories. I mean, we're all here because Inglewood is part of our personal story.
Today marks a day where residents and guests and family and friends can all join together in celebration of the life and legacy of Dr. King.
Life is about harmony and balance, and I hope that people will take some of this harmony and some of this balance with them and spread the love around.
He was my idol, identifying that you can, in fact, gain things in life by non-use of violence.
In my estimation, this is a big thing, and there are people that don't think this big thing should happen in Inglewood, no matter how deserving we are of it. We have a responsibility to what amounts to about 16,000 people that do an extrapolation would be verified signatures, more people than voted in the last election. We need to do the will of the people, and we need to do it tonight.
Dodson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Franklin.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
All right, now we can celebrate.
Today, it's our beautification day, but it's a little bit more than that. We're inviting our community to become owners of their school.
Let's have a good day cleaning up and have fun. We're behind you 100%. Remember, we are Inglewood.
I just hope that for the next generations, they'll follow in our footsteps. They'll just be a lot better.
In the evolution of cities, we've come a long ways very fast. This is just the beginning. Today, we're as good as anybody and better than most.
If you look at what has happened to this community in a short period of time, a community where so many people for so many years have worked so very hard to try to change that perception.
This stadium for us is really a beacon for Inglewood. It's going to be a global stage. It's going to be a destination. People are going to come from all over the world to embody this and watch the stadium and come to be here in this place.
Wilson Meany builds quality communities throughout California. We will take the time necessary to build a quality community for this community of City of Inglewood. This is a very robust project. 2,500 homes are also scheduled to be built on site. Over 26 acres of public park space that will be available to you, the citizens. It's more than sports. It's more than entertainment of any sorts. It's more than jobs, but it's actually where families come and live and experience a whole holistic lifestyle.
We've been paying attention to the things that cities have to do to be viable for economic development. Over the last five years, we have the five lowest consecutive years of recorded crime in the history of Inglewood.
Who wants to see the stadium? Who's it?
Each story of those that are represented by the luminarias lives on the track this evening. We will not forget those who have lost their battle to this disease, nor will we forget the story behind the bag. The ones we remember will always light our path. Whether the journey each luminary represents has finished or continues to move forward, we know the reasons to relay, light up tracks all around the world.
This is our third annual District 2 picnic, but it's our first chili cook-off. We have nine chili cook-off participants. I can't tell you which one I like the best only because my brother's one of the chefs.
Matthews, I'm the new state administrator for the Inglewood Unified School District, and I'm really excited to be here working with the community, working with staff, with parents, with our students to make sure that they get that high-quality education that they deserve.
We're celebrating our Hispanic Fiesta. You know, it's the month of September. There are about 16 Latin American countries that celebrate their independence in September throughout the world. So here, you know, the beauty about it being here in Inglewood is the fact that we represent them all. We have every type of Latin American country represented in the City of Inglewood with our residents. So today, we chose today to celebrate all of them.
This is what it's all about. We can only know the people that we're willing to come together with. And this city is a city where we have come together, and we are a good city because of it, and we're a better city because of it.
It starts at Inglewood Ave and goes west all the way to La Cienega, and it starts right here at Doty and goes east to Van Ness.
It's a historic day in the City of Inglewood. I think ever since I started working for the city about four years ago, the one thing that I heard is that you got to do something about Century Boulevard. And with the vision of the city council and the mayor and the support of staff, we're getting it done.
City of Garter and Buzzlebee buzzing birds from Papst of Blue Daylight, Inglewood.
Happy Thanksgiving and have a blessed one.
That he is embracing with community. He's got his production studios here, and he is taking care of our less fortunate, and we really appreciate it. He didn't just drop in and drop out. He stayed here and took over 1,000 pictures with his fans, with our residents, with our seniors, and he just made this a great event. So thank you, Snoop. The tree lighting ceremony, man, right here at the forum, the kids, the families, man. It's a great city, y'all. Y'all killing it out here, man, for real. Inglewood, I love y'all.
It's even bigger and better than last year. Our event always brings out a great crowd, and it's a wonderful thing to see. Inglewood come out and celebrate together.
Just recent, just as recent as yesterday, we hit another milestone. When I came into Inglewood, we had this residential sound insulation program that I knew nothing about. We set a goal of doing 1,000 homes a year so that we could complete the program by its deadline. When I came in office, we'd done 220 homes that year. Well, just yesterday, we went and celebrated finishing our 2,000th home in 11 months.
A committed public servant for more than 42 years. It's truly my pleasure to present the Public Sector Leader of the Year Award to Mayor James Butts.
Welcome to 2016 in the City of Inglewood District 4 Town Hall Meeting. Thank you for joining us on this Saturday. Give yourselves a hand. We have a lot of visitors and guests that are here today. I'm gonna try to read some of them, but I need to move on to the program itself. I want to recognize my colleague from District 3, Alex Padilla. District 2, District 2, District 2. City manager, Artie Fields. City manager, he's in line for food. My boss is not Mayor James T. Butts, but my boss, Juanita Franklin. She's at the table. Just acknowledge her, please. And then my right arm for the council, my council assistant, Claudette Matthews. Commissioner Terry L. Coleman from the Planning and Zoning Commission. We also have from the Commissioner W.G. Howard Jr., which is Shenandoah Block Club captain, and also the Construction Appeals Board. These are representatives for District 4. We have Commissioner Shebe Walton and Jean Eldridge on the Civil Service Board of Review. Jean's over there. We do know I have coming the Commissioner Barbara Brooks for the Parking and Traffic Commission. For the Aviation Commission, I have our Commissioner, Dr. Lois Dean Irving, Jim Withrow, I saw was in the audience, James Riggs is in the audience, Commissioner Dorothy Cole for Human Affairs Commission, and also the Van Ness Spinning Block Club. Linda Smith is here from the Citizens Police Oversight Commission. We also have for the Arts Commission, Vicki Banks. For the Parks and Recreation Commission, Willie Agee, District 4, and Fernando Mesa, who's with us. The Library Commission, Jackie Cochran, and our distinguished senior center advisory board member, Dolly Morrison. She's in the audience. Raise your hand. Our liaison to help us set up all of the tchotchkes and things you got in your tote bags for the District 4 ICOP Center, Aaron Elsie. I see Renee Talbert, who's a liaison to the mayor and council for the Inglewood Unified School District. Just raise your hands. And let me see. We want to acknowledge representatives from Century Heights, Neighborhood Watch. We have Second Avenue Block Club. We have Kashmir Penning Cullavan Block Club. We have Lamoli Avenue Block Club. We have Fourth Avenue Block Club. We have Van Wick Block Club. Ulysses Collins, I see him in the audience, and his lovely wife. Fifth Avenue Block Club, and there's several others. I also want to acknowledge the council assistant for District 1, but a resident of District 4, Alicia Smith. There we go. Give everyone a hand if you would, please. Now moving right into my District 4 talking points. I'm gonna give you a quick cursory review of current things that have already passed, and then the presenters will be talking about current items and moving forward. So if you have a pen, use the back of your agenda to make notes. It will begin as follows. For those that do not have access to the Inglewood Time Warner Cable Channel, you will be able to view this town hall meeting along with previous District 4 Town Hall meetings via YouTube link on the City of Inglewood website. It's www.cityofinglewood.org. For those of you who have access to a computer, a set of Town Hall Meeting DVDs are delivered to the District 4 ICOP Center and are available for free. Check out for viewing by you, your family, and your block club. The District 4 ICOP Center is located at 2666 West Imperial Highway. Please keep the volume down, please. We're moving on in the program. Mr. Aaron Elsie is the ICOP Center liaison and can be reached by calling 310-330-5346. Or you may stop by Monday through Thursday between 11:00 to 4:00 to pick up those items. Job opportunities. Our job opportunities email list has been in place for several years now, and we continue to experience tremendous success with residents finding full and part-time employment. Thank you to the many individuals, organizations, and churches who are taking the time to pass this information along to family members, neighbors, customers, and friends. Those who have an interest in being added to our job list can simply provide your name, email address, or the sign-in sheet, or you may contact my assistant Claudette Matthews at our district office at 310-412-8605. Emergency numbers. At the registration table, please pick up the latest version of the City of Inglewood's emergency numbers list, which provides the numbers of both the city and other local contract utility service providers. For the District 4 capital improvement projects, for the year 2014 to 2015 budgeted year, our Public Works Department along with our contractors have completed several capital improvement projects across the district. Completed projects include the alley improvement project for alleys located between 108th and 109th Streets from Crenshaw Boulevard to Spinning Avenue and the alley between Van Ness and Spinning Avenue from 108th Street to Cullavan Street. These projects also include the addition of new cement driveway approaches at the alley entrances, partial sidewalk replacement, and the installation of no dumping and/or no parking in the alley signage in these locations. We completed the street improvement project on Fourth Avenue between 104th and 108th Streets, which included the grinding of the old asphalt, the application of a new asphalt, and restriping. The sidewalk improvement project was also completed in several areas throughout the district, including 101st Street, 108th Street, 109th Street, 112th Street, 113th Street, 117th Street, Third Avenue, Fifth Avenue, Van Wick Street, Wilkie Avenue, and Thoreau Street. American Disability ramps were installed in key locations for the year 2015-16. Public Works, the City of Los Angeles, and the LA County Department of Public Works are currently working on the Van Ness Street Improvement Project. This project extends from 108th Street on the north to Imperial Highway Street on the south. Currently, the street has been resurfaced, and restriping is pending with the expectation of the project being completed by the spring of 2016. The alley improvement project to resurface alleys in the non-CDPG area in the District 4 area, we're moving forward in this area for this year. New pedestrian ramps on Crenshaw Boulevard and 102nd Street. In December 2015, a new pedestrian access ramp was installed to replace the stairs located on the west side of Crenshaw Boulevard at 102nd Street just south of the 99 Cent Store off of Crenshaw. This ramp was installed to provide ease to access for the Food for Less and the Village at Century shopping centers that were difficult to access by persons utilizing motorized wheelchairs and those suffering with compromised mobility who have difficulty taking the stairs. The water main break at 118th Place and Cherry Avenue in January 2016. A water failure, a water main failure at the intersection of 118th Place and Century Avenue resulted in residents in the surrounding area having either no or very low water pressure. Public Works made several attempts to repair the line, which resulted in multiple cracks formed down the length of the water main line. At this time, the old water main line needs to be removed and replaced with a new water main, and the cost is approximately $100,000. Public Works will also be bringing this matter before the city council for review and approval of the expanded, expand of these funds, expend of these funds. For parks and recreation and library services, Center Park Design Project and Senior Update. The city is moving forward with its plans to improve the layout and usefulness of the Center Park located between 111th Street and 111th Place immediately behind Worthington Elementary School on Yukon Avenue, making it a place where the local community can gather with friends and family. Ms. Sabrina Barnes, our Director of Parks and Recreation and Library Services, will be providing you with an update of the current design plans for the Center Park along with an update on plans for this senior center. Parking enforcement. In September 2015, representatives from the office, Parking Enforcement, representatives from my office, Parking Enforcement, Inglewood Police Department, along with the city attorney, held a special community meeting with impacted residents on Eighth Avenue from 102nd Street to 104th Street to address parking citations issued in the violation of the State Penal Code 22500F, which forbids any portion of a parked vehicle from blocking any portion of the sidewalk. City staff successfully worked with the impacted residents to address their concerns. Golden State Water, the drought and its impact on you. Currently, information on landscape irrigation schedules and regulation for both the City of Inglewood Water and Golden State Water Company customers can be found at the registration table. You're encouraged to get copies and share that information with your family, members, friends, and neighbors. May also be experienced an increased number in ants, spiders, and other pests invading your home. If so, please know they too are looking for your precious water. Golden State Water is currently engaged in water main replacement project on Spinning Avenue between 108th Street on the north to Imperial Highway on the south. The scope of the project will incorporate the installation of more than 8,200 feet of duct iron pipe of varying diameters, the adjustment of customer lines to connect the new water line, the removal of 11 existing fire hydrants, and the installation of 15 new hydrants. Construction began in December 2015 and will continue for the next six months with the estimated time of finishing sometime in the summer of 2016. Water main failure at Arthith and Thoreau. In December 2015, there was a failure by Golden State Water Main at the intersection of Arthith Avenue and Thoreau, and Golden State Water crew responded not once but twice and repaired the water main and laid new asphalt. Southern California Edison is conducting a series of planned outages across the city to perform needed upgrades and repairs, including replacement of deteriorating infrastructure and improving power reliability. For District 4, be advised that on Thursday, January 28th, the residents located on the north side of 111th Street between Prairie Avenue and Doty Avenue are scheduled for a planned outage to upgrade. Equipment beginning 9:30 a.m. and continuing to 4:30 p.m. If you have any questions regarding planned outages or if you have questions regarding emergency service, please contact the Southern California Edison at 1-800-611-1911. Code enforcement. Code enforcement has diligently worked on addressing several issues in district. Among them are illegal street vendors, illegal garage conversions, alleged squatter activity, overgrown and unkept landscaping, and deteriorating home exteriors. If you see or suspect illegal activity, please note the activity and location and contact Code Enforcement Division at 310-412-5590. All these numbers, if you grab the flyer that has the emergency numbers, you can refer to them for future reference. We also want to thank the Public Works. We also want the public to thank the Code Enforcement staff for citing those businesses, particularly restaurants, which have failed to secure their dumpsters to prevent the overflow of trash and debris. In addition, I thank the Code Enforcement staff for their enforcement actions regarding the refuse dumping at the abandoned gas station located at the corner of Imperial Highway and Yukon Avenue. The property has been cleaned, and the property will continue to be monitored. The homeless and homelessness. Inglewood Police Department Community Affairs, people assisting the homeless, and St. Margaret Center Catholic Charities have been very successful in their efforts to address and resolve issues related to the homeless and homeless encampments in our community. Several persons have been moved off the streets and into appropriate housing or have been united with their families. Homeless encampments impact the image and quality of life in our community, and the Inglewood Police Department Community Affairs Division is addressing these challenges with kindness and compassion. If you see homeless or homeless encampments, please notify the Inglewood Police Department by calling 310-412-5530. Again, 310-412-5530. We now have a winter shelter program. The organization First to Serve, Inc., is sponsoring a winter shelter program that began November 2015 and will continue through March 2016. The winter shelter is located at the Inglewood Armory located at 111 Grovesner Avenue in Inglewood. The program provides overnight beds, hygiene kits, showers, food and clothing, along with supportive services and TV screening and testing for individuals in need of temporary shelter from the rain and cold weather. For more information, you may contact First to Serve at 323-758-4670. And finally, thank you in advance for your continued patience and understanding of the intermittent street closures, lane closures, and increased traffic on several of our major thoroughfares and resident streets in support of the ongoing construction projects at the Hollywood Park Project Site, the Forum Events, water main replacement, gas line replacement, street resurfacing projects taking place around the city. We definitely have a lot going on, but all of our efforts are going to result in a tremendous transformation of our city and our way of life. The best is yet to come. Again, thank you for your cooperation and understanding during this time and transformation of the City of Inglewood, renewing our brand as the City of Champions. Thank you. I have a point of information. Someone left their cellphone at the registration table, so if you are that person, please go and get that at this time. All right. So before he gets up to speak, we do have another presenter. Because of El Nino and people making sure they have adequate insurance, we want to bring up one of our longtime residents, longtime business persons throughout the city. As the subject matter is, do you have adequate insurance? Please help me welcome from the Allstate Insurance Agency, Billy Campbell.
Good morning. Thank you, Councilman Franklin. I'm Billy Campbell, and it's my daughter, Helene. I'm Billy Campbell. It's my daughter, Helene. Good morning again. I'm an agency, Allstate Insurance Agency, owning in the beautiful city of the City of Inglewood. How is that? Hello? All right, good, okay. In 1997, I had a conversation with a friend of mine, Willie Brown, who I've known for over 40 years, and I was planning to relocate my office, and he says Inglewood was a business-friendly city, and that was confirmed. I then had a conversation with Mayor, Doran, who was the mayor at that one time, and I was introduced around the city, and the city has been very, very friendly to me. I often ask Mayor Butts, "How does it feel to sit on the nose of a rocket?" And he just smiles because this city is moving, needless to say, in light with lightning speed. Some of my corporate clients here in the city consist of the City of Inglewood, Hollywood Park Casino has been very, very friendly in the way of business since 2005. As a matter of fact, Leo Chu sponsored me for the California Grounding Association. As a result of that relationship, not only do I have insurance with the City of Inglewood, but also the Hustle Casino and the Normandy Casino. Inglewood Park Cemetery is also a client. We have personal lines of insurance, which my daughter is going to explain briefly, and she'll be sitting at this table across the way.
Good morning. Well, since 1997, I am currently a resident of Inglewood as well, and I'm enjoying the experience, and it is definitely, it's been a good thing. What I'm here to discuss is we sell several lines of insurance. One is personal lines, which everyone's familiar with, your homeowners, your auto, your earthquake insurance, which we definitely need to talk about, and as well as flood insurance. Can't hear me? You can't hear me? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Again, I'm Helene Campbell, and we are the Allstate Insurance, the Campbell Agency, and we sell several lines of insurance. We have personal lines, including your auto, your homeowners, flood, and earthquake. If you do not have earthquake insurance or flood insurance, you need to see me at the table. We definitely need to have a conversation. If you have not reviewed your insurance with your insurance broker in the last 24 months, we also need to have a conversation because that needs to be done at least semi-annually, if not annually, because things change so much. The other thing is that we specialize, and my specialty is life and financial services. I do long-term care for our seniors. If you have parents that have been ill and you have had to If you have parents that have been ill and you have had to take care of them, you need to see me, because it is financially draining, and the average rate of anybody going into a facility now is about $6,000 a month. And if you want to get in a good facility, that is the going rate now. The other thing is that we specialize in two new life products. We have a term insurance products for people that are 18 years old to 45, and we do life insurance up to age 80. I'm done.
Give my hand, please. So the Allstate Insurance Company will be at the table before you leave. Be sure to stop and get your insurance needs taken care of. In interest of time, again, we have to get out of this room real quickly. That group next behind us is trying to come in. We had to get them to lower their voices so we can continue with this program as well.
Thank you so much. You know, I've been around on this project 10-plus years now, and I've seen many of you, I've been in your homes, and I just really want to thank you for being supportive of the project, even in its infancy, back when many people, as the mayor was saying, didn't believe in the project, didn't believe in the investment. Even though the company I work with is worth $14 billion, people didn't believe that we were going to actually go through with actually building this project. But a lot of it had to do with your approval, you taking the time to actually come by, pose questions, and help in some of the planning process. And especially the last five years in which the project moved from its infancy after the recession to actually fruition, and I want to thank the city council, and particularly Mayor Butts for actually helping to usher and negotiate with us the process to get us to this point. And about two years ago, when we had a drop-in visitor that came in and wanted to visit with us to talk about building football, our company actually wouldn't talk to them, because we had had so many false folks coming before talking about, we want to build this, we want to build that. We were already started on our trajectory to build what you knew at the time was Hollywood Park Tomorrow. It was the mayor of Inglewood that contacted me. I was in the middle of a parking lot downtown and would not get off the phone until I made the arrangements for the meeting to happen. In fact, he kept calling and kept calling. I couldn't go into our meetings until we secured the actual meeting with then a gentleman by the name of Stan Kronke. And he came in to meet with me, and he walks in the door. I had no idea who he was, and when he left, I had clear understanding of exactly who the gentleman was. And today, from that conversation that started from the mayor of Inglewood, we are here today. Yeah, originally, the Hollywood Park investment in the project was just slightly under $2 billion. It was slightly under $2 billion. Now, the stadium alone is $2.66 billion for just the stadium. This project will be in excess of $4 to $5 billion on its completion, and it's still growing. So it is a significant investment. Like the mayor was saying, the first year, just in terms of the sales tax, understand there's going to be almost $600 million just in steel put into this building, and the taxes will be laden here in the City of Inglewood. That was also a negotiating point in which we came up with and worked with the State Board of Equalization to ultimately come with the ability to laden the taxes right here. So that's a significant accomplishment, that we want to make sure that every opportunity, every financial opportunity actually would generate here in the City of Inglewood. Jobs component through the life of the project, over 40,000 jobs, construction jobs will be generated by the project, and then once it's completed on the other side of the project, there'll be over 3,000 to 4,000 jobs on site. I am so happy to show that. I remember all the years of meeting in individuals' homes and asking, we want white tablecloth restaurants where we could sit down and have a decent meal. We want places to shop that have a higher quality other than a 99-cent store. Willie A.G. wanted a football field. I'm just saying that it's amazing what this actual stadium does. It's actually a project bigger than a stadium. We are building close to 800,000 square feet of grade-A office. With grade-A office comes grade-A jobs. So we have tons of jobs that'll be associated with the stadium, and operations of the stadium, and the seasonal jobs that go in football is happening, but there'll be grade-A jobs associated with the office, and that was made possible by the addition of the stadium. And so as the mayor was saying earlier, when people talk about, you know, no economic prosperity from a stadium, we're not building just a stadium. It's really a very large project that will bring significant types of jobs in there. That office is designed to bring the NFL Networks, nfl.com, and the NFL Hall of Fame. Those operate 24/7 throughout the year, not just for the few games that would happen a year. That stadium was designed in a manner in which it will be an international stage. Understand that the difference between our project as proposed and that was proposed in Carson was that this was designed to be an international stage, so that's why it's at $2.66 billion just for the stadium portions alone. So when this says entertainment capital of the world, we mean for this to be the actual entertainment capital of the world. It is a significant project, okay? For the sake of time, because we're starting to run out of time here, I just want to make a couple just really quick observations here. Understand, in that initiative, an environmental impact report was done. We could never get that through anybody's understanding. Actually, three environmental impact reports have been done on the site, and the only way that initiative could have been done is if, because there was an existing environmental impact report that the city required us to evaluate, both not only the financial stability of being able to support the stadium alone, it's a financial impact report that was independently verified by the city itself, but the environmental impact report included in that an evaluation for the additional 60 acres and for a number of different types of properties that far exceeded what we actually are going to build. And we could not get anybody to understand or even read the volumes of documents that related to an environmental impact report. So I just wanted to clear that up, because you're not going to hear that, and it is actually in the city's archives there. You can go in, it's a huge, it'll spread all the way across the environmental impacts that are associated with that. And with that, yes, so real quick about the job opportunities. Again, there'll be 40,000 jobs created over the lifespan of the construction of the property. We have a current jobs program that in the initiative, in the development agreement with the city, 30% of the jobs are required to be, first go to the Inglewood residents. So if you, based on construction that's going on, that's a huge volume. The project does have a project labor agreement on it. We negotiated that during the initiative phase, so those are all quality, high-paying union jobs associated with the project. Post-construction, there is also 35% that are set aside for the parts of the property in which we control. So we'll control the stadium, for example. Those, there's a 35% Inglewood requirement to go to those jobs associated with the city. So there are a lot of things in which, people will call them set aside. No, that's actually what the citizens of Inglewood earned and have a right to. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Councilman Franklin.
All right, give my hand. We're running a little late. I want to personally apologize to the people in the back. We are competing against another group back there. I think they're finally leaving, because it was difficult for you guys to hear everything. Be mindful, this is being recorded, and it will be on YouTube on the city's web link, so you'll be able to get that as well once they finish the production. Now, next, I want to bring up about Public Works. I shared with you projects that have been completed in District Four and around the city. I now want to bring up our Public Works Director, Mr. Lewis Atwell, to talk about current projects and ones that are scheduled to be done in this budget. Please help me recognize Lewis Atwell. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Franklin. I don't know what to say, I'm speechless. I truly am. I work for the greatest leaders in the nation. I worked for the City of Los Angeles, I've worked for Las Vegas, and now I'm working for the best city in the world. I'll tell you that right now. And thank you, Mayor, you're like my father. I love you. I really do. Councilman Padilla, you're like my older brother. And the same with you, sir. But truly, I am so blessed to be here. I can't even tell you that, and I'm going off script, obviously, but when I first interviewed with the council, the mayor and I connected, and I'm very fortunate. I also brought my daughter here, and she hasn't seen me cry, I don't think, ever. Okay, so Public Works Department, a little bit about us. We are really, you know, the mayor and council, they sell the city, there's no doubt about it, but they're selling a product that we try to make better, and that's our streets, that's our, pretty much everything that you can see and stuff below ground. Next slide, please. We're made up of several divisions, including engineering, environmental services, which is solid waste and trash, fleet services, which we work on all the police vehicles and other vehicles that support the city, general services, which is our buildings, GIS, which is our mapping. By the way, we've been getting tons of requests for maps, especially our zoning maps, because people want to build in this city and they want to invest in this city. And also, we, public services, which is our water, sewer, and street maintenance, transportation engineering, which is our street signals, our traffic signals and streetlights, water resources, and also permitting. Next, please. Our core services, just really quickly, we design, construct, inspect, and maintain all of the city's infrastructure, except for parks. Sabrina, that's her job, and she makes our parks beautiful. We maintain city buildings, we issue permits, we manage, again, the traffic, I mean, the solid waste, and also repair and maintain our vehicles. Next slide. So since Councilman Franklin already gave me, gave a presentation on the completed projects, I won't go too much into that, but we did do alleys last year. We haven't done alleys in I don't know how many years, and a lot of them are still in disrepair, but we continue to do alleys, and we've done many, many streets. Since I've come on board, the mayor has essentially said, you need to not manage projects, you need to deliver projects, and that's what we're doing. These are some of the streets and the alleys that we've repaired. Next slide, please. So these are the proposed projects. Now, some of these proposed projects, including Century Boulevard, but I'll get to that in a second. These are the projects that we're proposing this year under our streets and alleys. I've been working closely with Councilman Franklin and my engineering staff, and we've come up with two of the worst alleys in District Four, and we're going to be doing them this year. We budgeted for them, I'll be going to council for approval, but the council has been, and the mayor have been very supportive of what we're doing. The streets, we're still determining what streets need to be improved, and we expect to do about 250,000 square feet this year in District Four. We did about 100,000 last year. Next slide. Thank you. What street do you live on? And then, of course, Imperial Highway is one project that is currently under design, and we look forward to building it very soon. We're working with mayor and council and coming up with the funding for it, but especially now with all the great things that are going to be happening out here, I think we're going to do it, and we're planning on doing it in just a couple of years. Stadium's going to take three years, this may take about a year and a half, a year. Next, please. Century Boulevard. I'm sorry it took a century to get us where we're at, but we're finally here, and it took the hammer, the mayor, to help make this happen. And what we did was, this is a very, very difficult project to deliver, because it is a massive project, we had to correct mistakes from the past, but what we did was, we broke the project into pieces. We actually broke it into segments, and any segment that took a little bit longer to do, we left out until now. We'll be going out to bid for another segment, but really, we're doing almost all of it right now, and you can see all the construction work going on out there. And so it is just, it is phenomenal. That is a legacy project that I'm glad I'm putting to bed. Next, please. And then, of course, Van Ness is a, Van Ness Street is in bad shape, you know, and the biggest problem is it shares a border with LA and LA County, and that's what makes it difficult, because sometimes it's hard to work for, you know, with those cities. Even though I work for one of those cities, it's hard to work with the county, it's hard to work with the city. I hope it's not harder now that they know that we're getting a stadium, but... And by the way, are we going to let ESPN Zone come? Yeah, I don't know. Maybe we have our own. But anyway, so that's Van Ness, and it's getting done. This is in between Manchester and Century. And I think that concludes my presentation. Do we have time for questions? Okay. Okay.
So I want to stress the reference of the Century Boulevard project, that the project has been done all the way from Van Ness on the east to La Sandiga on the west, and that the Public Works Director has already got the crews working simultaneously from the west of Van Ness Avenue as well as Los, I'm sorry, La Sandiga on the west to Van Ness on the east. And they're coming from each end and coming into the middle. So therefore, you are going to have some disruption. That's what I already shared with you from Van Ness to Century. They are already working on part of the project that is from Century to Dodie with all the lines that need to be done. And clearly, I want to make sure by name that people understand that the alley is located between Van Ness Avenue and Spinning Avenue from Cullavan to 111th Street. And the alley located between Van Ness Avenue and Spinning Avenue from 111th Street to Imperial Highway is on the project to be done. That's what you kept asking for. But I have to remember, it just doesn't, you don't just pull a rabbit out of the hat. You have the money. So with this help and the council's help, we was able to find the money to get it done in this year's project. And our, and we are in fiscal year, so fiscal year is what? October 1st to September 30th. So just bear with us and weather permitting, we'll get it all done. Take a couple of questions or comments for the Public Works Department. Yes, young lady?
Wait, I'm sorry.
We're going to use the mic.
Speaking of Spinning Avenue, we have had construction with the pipe.
Yes.
Now, there's some marks still on the sidewalks. Are you going back in there?
That's Golden State Water and we require them to remove the marks.
Oh, that's it? They're not going back in for another reason?
No.
Oh, cool.
Yeah. They determine what pipelines or electrical conduits are underneath the ground so they don't hit them when they're putting their line in. But they'll remove those marks.
Hi, I have a question regarding coming off the 105 freeway going west, the Crenshaw exit. When you come off there, that, along Crenshaw, the street is like really torn up. And I know part of that is not Inglewood, but is there something that can be done because that's an eyesore and it's damaging to our cars when you come off?
Yeah, there is something that we can do. Some of that may be Caltrans influenced because it's right off the 105. But this is, we're entering, we're an embryo. We are now entering into a new paradigm. I mean, it's unbelievable. We will now have money to fix, well, I couldn't say this because I'm on video and then I have to live up to it and then it may be used against me. The previous, the previous director opened up his mouth and look where he is. He's in Compton. This is Inglewood. We're going to do our best that we can. It's a brand-new paradigm. That's all I can tell you. So we'll do our best. Mayor, do you want to say something?
Okay. All right, let's give Lewis Atwell a hand and his daughter for joining us here this So next, we're going to bring up the residential sound insulation representative who has been outstanding. This lady has identified where there's a will, there's a way. Repeat after me. Where there's a will, there's a way. And I have to tell you, Betty Griffith, our residential sound insulation program manager, when Lawa, or Los Angeles Airport, said, "We ain't got no money." Betty says, "You're going to find some somewhere because we're going to work on finishing the square blocks or the end of the blocks. And we're going to get all those homes that qualify underneath the flight path, some funding so we can get it done within the timeframe," which was December 31st, 2015. So now, I'll turn it on, Betty Griffith's here.
Good morning, everyone. Well, first, I'd like to just publicly thank the mayor for his leadership. And I mean, we've heard all the good things that he's done, but really, you must have a leader. Can you hear me now? You must have a leader that has a vision in order for you to accomplish anything. So Mayor, I publicly want to thank you for what you've done. You are awesome. The program was in the toilet, you might say. And the mayor, through his vision and his reputation, was able to bring us up. And so, but you can have a mayor, but if you don't have, like you said before, it's an opportunity and you have to plan for that opportunity, which we were able to do. We put together a detailed plan and we had the opportunity to execute the plan. The plan being, if we did not do what we had to do, that contract would expire and we would not have had the opportunity to do the sound insulation for the end of the block, which we have been asked, especially District 4, end of the block, squared-off block, when are you going to get to our homes? It was really an awesome uphill task, but it was something that was needed and deserved by the homeowners. And it was something that was owed to the city. And so it was an opportunity, a challenge and an opportunity at the same time. But when you're community-focused and you have leadership behind you, you can get the job done. You just have to have the fortitude, the desire, and of course, the ability to make it happen. So I want to thank the audience that endured the time to be patient, to wait for us to get where we had to go. They wouldn't allow us to even offer it to you until we made sure we went through everybody in the city that was in the contour, the opportunity to have their homes done. So that put a heck of a task on us to get that done in this window that we were under. I mean, it was going to sunset December 31st, 15. So we were running around trying to make sure everybody that's actually in the contour had an opportunity to apply for the service. So we had a real, real hard task, but like I said, if you, if you have a plan and you have the leadership behind you, you execute that plan and you just stay focused. So we stayed focused, we got the right people in, we put the teams together. It was a team effort. All the departments, every department within the city assisted us. We had city clerk's office, we had building and safety, we had the mayor's office, we had the city managers, everybody assisted to help us make that happen. So I want to thank you for your patience. We did 2,077 homes in that period of time, which was never, ever, no one, I don't think, will ever, ever attempt it again, and I hope we don't have to. But in the whole United States, all the cities that's sitting right under an airport has the same program. No one in the whole United States have ever, ever, ever even attempted to do something like this and to get the money behind it. We received $90 million within one year. But we needed that to do what we had to do. Unheard of. Lawa has never given out $44 million to one grant. Never, never. So for us to get that kind of money and have FAA support it, it speaks volumes to what Inglewood really represents. So not only are we on the cutting edge with, I mean, the city of Inglewood all around is on the cutting edge. So we're going to have the entertainment city, but we're also doing some stuff on the infrastructure as you heard from Mr. Atwell. And so from the residential sound, we're just being in concert with the new leadership. You have to have your departments and have that same vision for their own departments to be in line with the city's leadership. So if everybody's not in concert, it's all for naught. So we offer services to the community, but we all have to do it at that same level. So I'm grateful for the opportunity. I'm grateful that we had the opportunity to service you, especially the squared-off block. We were able to do 750 homes that would never, ever get serviced. Never, never. And 750 homes got serviced that did not qualify because you were not in their contour. So that, to me, is awesome. So I thank you for your patience because you've been asking for it for a long time, but it almost slipped right by us. So I thank you, Mayor, again, for allowing that opportunity for our homeowners to get. I know you hear the planes. I knew you were hearing them all along. But when you don't have the ability to make it happen, it's not too much you can do when you didn't receive money for four years. So I'll kind of end on that happy note that we did the 2,077 homes in 11 months. It's just, I'm just blessed, blessed to be able to be part of that team that made it happen. We have a new program that started October 1st. It's a little different, just slightly. You still have to be in the contour, but now FAA has come out with new guidelines. You must also have each room in your home tested to see if your home hits a decibel level that is eligible to have our service. Our service has been somewhat slightly altered. Currently, our program, our old program, had a windows, doors, and HVAC system. Today, if you qualify, you'll have windows, doors, and a ventilation system. Know that I'm fighting for the whole thing, at least air conditioning, because I don't think a ventilation system, to me, is like opening up your windows. Then that negates the whole issue of having sound insulation if I had to open my windows to get some air. So we're, but thank goodness for the ones that had their homes done because you do have forced air now. So the program's slightly different. It will continue on, but it'll continue on at a little slower pace because we got to start over again, if you will. There's a map up. I have a new map. They divide, they came up with a new map. It's not too much different than the map that we are currently using. And if you look at the map, you can see all the green represents all the homes that have currently been completed. So what my challenge is, is to go out and try to find homes that were never, ever included in our program to have them included. So there's some, and I won't, but there is a strong possibility for Carlton Square, crossroads. I'm working on homes that was never, ever included for whatever, and you know, it's almost sitting right under the flight path, but we, we're working on it. So I'll just leave it at that. I have, I'll be here if you have some definite questions about where you are, your address, and if you're eligible. You can call the office or you can ask me today and I can return the call.
Need a mic? Need a mic? Just wait a minute. Thank you.
Hi, thank you so much. Is there any way that you can just restate the contour area again? Because some of us applied and we were told, oh, your street is just one, you know, street over. Can you just restate what the contour area is again?
That would be hard. We have the map.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I can't. But it's all this blue in here. You see the shaded blues all the way out? If you're inside those areas, then you are eligible. If you're outside those areas, you're not. And you have to realize that this is FAA and Lawa, the sponsors' contour, they established this contour. We are flow-through. The city does not really pay for all this, so we have to go by their guidelines. And as much as possible, I look for ways and means that we can, as with the squared-off block. Squared-off blocks are not really in their contour, they're down here. So some of your homes that got finished are in here. They're not in here at all. And there's no more, four square blocks. That was only through our settlement, which sunset on December 31st. Any other questions?
A young lady right here.
Good morning and thank you. I live on Cullavan.
I can't hear you.
Can you hear? Can you hear me now? Yes, I can hear myself. Okay. I live on Cullavan Street and every morning at 5:00, it is an airplane or a jet or something that comes over the home, going shakes the building, going north. I don't have to worry about setting my clock to wake me up because it will.
I can appreciate that you, I'm sure you hear the noise, but it is outside of the contour, which means it's ineligible for our service. Yeah, we get this from them. This is their maps that we have to use as their guideline for us to do the homes. Otherwise, the mayor would say, well, you know, we can't pay for this because if you allowed someone to have this service and they're not in the contour, then I'll be in Compton.
And speaking of elected people with sense, speaking of elected people with sense, we had a person representing us in Sacramento that was very instrumental in bringing us money to Inglewood. Please help me represent or recognize our former settlement member, Steve Bradford. Thank you very much for shoring up. And Al, if you've been hearing part of my presentation, I deal with the nuts and bolts. When you talk about the sidewalks, the curbs, the alleys, the trees that need to be trimmed, the streetlights are out, that's what I do. We had the mayor and the department head speak. They do the global effect to let you know what's going on. This time, we're now going to talk about one park. City of Inglewood, District 4 only has one park. That's called Center Park. And so we also had the issue regarding where are we with reference to the senior center? It's been closed for umpteen years, tore down, et cetera. We are seniors. When is it going to come back up? So we brought the expert that has the know. Please help me recognize our director, Sabrina Barnes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. I too stand here, proud employee of the city of Inglewood and a resident, and so glad to be able to say I have a new stadium coming to my town. I remember a couple of weeks ago, the mayor mentioned that we won the LA Curbed Best City in 2014. And when they were voting for the 2015 city, their leading line was that we spent our time in the ridiculous pursuit of an NFL stadium. All I have to say is, how you like us now? So I get to talk to you a little bit, a little bit about the Center Park project. We are so pleased to be able to announce that we're going to be doing some renovations and modifications there. In 2006, California voters passed Prop 84, which brought forth about $368 million for parks. A critical component of the application or the grant that we went after involved community planning, which meant we needed to go to the community and ask them specifically, what is it that you want to see in your park? Well, over the course of about two years of 2009 and 2010, we held six community meetings. And from those meetings, we built the basis of our application. And in 2012, we were awarded $2.6 million for Center Park. When we met with residents, they were very clear about what it is they wanted to see happen at the park. They spoke about a walking trail. They wanted health and fitness opportunities. They wanted us to definitely look and take care of the restrooms, new construction of restrooms, increasing the lighting, a sense of security. They wanted us to put cameras in the park. They also wanted us to upgrade the fencing and basically make it a place where residents and their families could come and it not be taken over just by folks that would come in from the outside and take over the park. What we did after that is, you may have noticed that the park is confined in a wrought iron fence. Well, we actually shared that property with the Inglewood School District. They owned about .6 acres of the park. After a series of negotiations, we were able to buy that property. And now all of that land within the fence belongs to us. A couple of the conditions associated with the property was that, in us buying it, we still needed to allow the school to use it as a playground. So we will continue to do that. They also wanted to make sure that we left a flat, grassy play area so that there was a playground for the children. And so we will be allocating about 30,000 square feet specifically for that. From the slides here, you'll see what the park looks like and feels like right now. We all agree that it needs some improvements. And so we're pleased to have money to do. The next slide will show an aerial of the park. And so what you will see in the aerial is just the bare, just about bare land. We have a playground here. We have some concrete walkways and what have you, but basically, the only amenities there are a playground. Well, we will be adding the amenities that the community asked for. So specifically, there will be a new walking trail that makes up the outside area of the park, the perimeter. We're going to add eight of the fitness stations, and I'm sure you may have seen them at other parks, their bikes, their apparatuses that allow you to do workouts from your head to your toe. There'll be a tot lot. We'll be adding back the playground area for the two- to five-year-olds. Currently, it only serves the five-to-12. Ornamental gardens. We're going to fix those restrooms. We are going to have brand-new restrooms for male and female. restrooms for male and female, we're going to add extra stalls, there'll be site fencing, and we'll have security cameras there. We'll have cameras where, if someone calls and says, Sabrina, I think they're doing, they're writing graffiti on the walls. At my station, I'll call the police, but at my station, I can look at the park. The police will also be able to look at the park and to get someone out there for you right away. And I believe that's a tremendous hope, just because we all want to feel a sense of security and want to be able to enjoy the luxuries of our community. The next step, so what's next? Well, the steps that have been completed, we've shared the preliminary design with IUSD and the Parking Rec Commission, we've also completed design specifications. So, right now, we're in the process of bidding the project. We will award the contract, and then we will proceed. We anticipate that the project will begin in April of 2016, and that will be completed by mid-October 2016. You'll have a brand-new park in District Four to enjoy. One of our larger projects, and we're really, really excited about this, is our new senior center. If you've been in the community, you know that we have been looking to get a new senior center for many, many years. The previous project included housing and a senior center, but in 2010, our mayor and council members decided that this was not the best project for our city, and provided some direction on how we should proceed. In June through August of 2012, they authorized us to proceed with just building a new senior center only, on the side of the old property, which is going to be located at 111 North Locust, that's at the corner of Locust and Queen Street. They also authorized funding for this new center, and then they put in place an advisory committee of about 15 seniors to oversee the process and to provide feedback on what this senior center should look and feel like, and what it would mean, and to tell us what it means to seniors, and what they're looking for, this other place called home that they want to experience when they are not in their actual homes. Fast forwarding, the team, the mayor and council hired a wonderful team of consultants to work with staff and the senior center to realize the project. We have Penner Construction GKK, they are the design-build entity, they are tasked with bringing the project from the ground and making it a realization in terms of building it. Our senior center advisory committee continues to meet on a monthly basis to provide feedback. We also have city staff working on this, and Gwen Pugh Urban Design Studios, who's the city's representatives as it relates to architectural engineering and construction management. Councilman Franklin mentioned earlier, Dolly Morrison, who is in the audience here, she actually serves on the senior center advisory committee, and she has been representing you well. So, if you don't, and can you just go back one? Okay, so, this is the final design rendering of the actual project, it's a $23 million project that will be realized. The senior center is approximately 36,000 square feet, it's a two-story above-ground building, and also includes underground parking, two stories, or two levels of underground parking. The amenities will include, of course, a lobby area, there are multipurpose rooms, billiards and game rooms, a television room, computer lab, there's actually a community room that's built right on the Locust Street side, so residents, if you're, per se, it's the Rotary Club, or some other organization that wants to have their board meeting or something in the facility, that room will be available during the weekdays, but it will also be available for larger activities. We will have a huge multipurpose room, and our mayor is very technologically savvy, he wants to make sure that we have the best and the greatest. So, he has made sure that our multipurpose room is one that is state-of-the-art, so that it can be enjoyed for meetings such as this, for meetings such as town hall meetings and what have you that need to take place. So, what's next? The construction documents are close to 100%, we expect them to be submitted to the city in the next few days. Even better than that, we will be having a groundbreaking next month, and you all are invited to that groundbreaking. And then, the icing on the cake is that we will have a brand-new senior center in 2016. So, again, we are pleased to be able to report on these projects, we look forward to seeing you. I'm the Director of Parks Recreation and Library Services, and our role, just to make it plain, is we are here to help you all enjoy life, and we hope these two projects will do that. 2016. Yes, you were right. Yeah. The 2016 was referenced, unless I misspoke, I meant that to be Center Park.
Center Park this year, senior center next year. All right. We have a Q and A, question-answer comment, give us a moment to get you the mic. Right here.
I just wanted to mention that, at Center Park, I would hope that you don't have any more of the wood chips, because I take my granddaughter every time she comes, and the last time I went, I got one of the wood chips in my eye, and that's really not safe for the kids or me.
Okay, so, you will be happy to know that we will be replacing the wood chips, but I would also like to add that, when we installed wood chips, those are all certified wood fibers, and they were authorized and approved by the city's risk manager pool that we deal with, so they aren't random, and they were approved based on playground safety standards. But we do know that the residents prefer non-wood chips, so we're replacing the surfacing that's at the existing playground with a rubberized surface.
Two more comments, we'll do this young lady right here, and then that young lady over there, and then we'll move to the next presenter.
Hi, just a quick question, will the park be pet-friendly, as far as on a leash, or anything like that?
We have current regulations on our books with regards to how residents should deal with their dogs in parks. This is a small, intimate park, so we would hope that dogs would be, not take over the park, and that that wouldn't be the main focus there. We have larger parks, such as Vincent Park, that are more conducive to dogs, but to say, our ordinance is speak to how dogs should be managed in our parks.
I think also we should clarify, because this is a residential park, because there's really no parking, that it's really designed for the K to five grade level, so we really focus on that, with the exception that with the new picnic areas we're going to have, which really encourages families to come collectively, and then the new walk path that will have all the exercise areas, we're now trying to promote adults to be there to help us oversee the young kids that normally use that park. Particularly, soccer's been a prominent area, that the people want to come there, but primarily we're trying to keep it as it's designed for, and that's K to five grade level. One more, we have one more question here, we need to move to the last presenter. Went to the mic, wait to the mic.
Is there any money in the foreseeable future for Darby Park? Any improvements in that area?
That's a yes. We will be walking, working on the walking path, which the residents have cried out for. We'll also be doing some interior and exterior painting, and then we're in conversations with a large organization that will help us with our fields and some upgrades there. But immediately, we have plans for the walking path and some interior and exterior painting.
Okay, let's give her a hand, if you would please, thank you. So, we're back on schedule, and again, I can't thank you enough for being here. As our town hall meetings took off, we talked about your personal value regarding making sure you had the needed insurance you needed, whether it was auto, safety for your personal needs, as well as being prepared for emergencies. Now, we want to conclude our town hall meeting with reference to emergency preparedness and public safety tips from our distinguished Los Angeles County Fire Department. Please help me recognize Battalion Chief Mark Whaling.
Thank you. In preparing for emergencies, we often give you long lists of things that you need to have, seeking shelter and food and those sort of things. And I want to tell you that you can, you have handouts, websites, and all of these kinds of things, that give you the list of all the items that you'll need in case of an emergency. But I was thinking about it, and I was looking at these lists, and I just want you to, if you want to simplify it, I want you to think of a situation where you could be cut off from your water supply, or the electricity that's in your home, or your gas services, and transportation services, and essentially, you'd be at your location, and you would just hunker down. And what would it be like? So, just plan for the absolute worst camping trip of your life. Absolutely, the absolute coldest, the absolute hottest, the absolute driest, and the absolute wettest. If you could plan for that, and have it last for several days, then you are emergency prepared. Having a good first aid kit, having the clothes with you, having stuff in your car, so that in case this disaster strikes while you are driving, you are prepared. I remember during the earthquakes we had back in 93, we helped many people, and there were ladies that were driving, their cars were then stranded, and they're trying to hike out of an area in shoes that were not meant for hiking. So, prepare for these kinds of things. How do we do this in the fire department to help you? We have a couple of events going on. One of them is this, today, we're actually doing an event at Magic Johnson Park, teaching people how to sandbag. We're having an event February 6th at Jesse Owens Community Park, and that's going to be a place where you can pick up sandbags, you can be shown how to properly sandbag, you can be shown how to protect your home from damage from floods or water. So, be aware of that. These flyers are all on the back tables, just so you know. We also have, we want you to know about the El Nino. El Nino is a term that simply means that we have a temperature change in part of this part of the hemisphere of the world, that's a huge part, it's only four degrees, but it's big enough to impact us. And what does it mean? Well, we all know about the rain that could possibly come, and these are huge amounts of water that can hit in a very short time, but it also means temperature swings, very dry, very hot, very wet, very cold, all that can happen. So, just like that camping trip I was telling you about earlier, prepare your home for all of that also. The El Nino, we thought we had the worst-case scenario back in 1982, and then we had a worst-case scenario in 1997, and we thought that was it, and all the temperature gradients and everything that we're looking at, look to be hotter, drier, and wetter than those years. So, it's hard to predict the weather, I'm just telling you what the experts are telling us, prepare. One of the things we need to prepare for is that during those storms back in 82, we lost power to 1.6 million people in Southern California. Ask yourself, right now, if right now the lights went out at your house, do you have batteries? Do you have the necessary means to keep everything you need going electricity-wise, to keep you in the event that power is shut off for a while? The weather was so intense back then, we actually had a tornado hit in Los Angeles. So, these are the kinds of things that we want you to know that are possible, so be prepared. How can you be prepared? You can check the websites, you can check the online information, you can listen to the TV news, you can listen to radio, you can read these pamphlets. But more importantly, you can be involved. How can you be involved? You can be involved with what we call the CERT program, Community Emergency Response Team. You have a lot of people involved in that. Anybody here right now involved in CERT, raise your hand, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, okay, I can see several of you. That team right there, what they are is, in the event that your community is hit by a disaster, you have people sitting around you right now, they are trained in first aid, they are trained in how to extract you from collapsed buildings, they are trained how to help you with some firefighting, they are trained where to direct you in case of emergency. We need more people trained. To accommodate that, we have an event coming up in June, it is going to be the traditional CERT training, it is several days stretched out over the whole month of June, flyers on the back table, like I said before earlier, and you could become part of that team. That team, like I was saying, I'm not quite sure how much equipment they got to take home, I know you get green helmets and vests and some other equipment, your backpack, yes, all that stuff. So, I've actually been on incidents where I was standing there, and I ran out a fireman, and I turned around behind me, and there were some green helmets, and I put them to work, and we had them carrying some people with litter, with the litter stretchers, got them out of there. Here's the flyer like this, it starts June 7th, it's a commitment of about seven days' worth of training, and it covers everything from fire suppression, to medical, to how to search for people in collapsed buildings, and those types of things. So, you can not only be prepared for yourself, but you could be prepared as a community. And listening, and I'm very inspired, listening to all that has taken place this morning in these presentations, obviously, Inglewood is really coming to the forefront of so many things, and great job to all the leaders that have made that happen. And the people that are volunteering to be part of your CERT teams are also people that are concerned of making the community as safe and as progressive as possible. And in emergency preparedness, I just want to give you a little update on what's going on with your fire department. On a day, right now, there are 19 firefighters in your city, on three engines, three paramedic squads, and a ladder truck, they're here 24/7, and we serve you all the time, and we enjoy it, and that is why we're here. You might think, Inglewood, you know, that's our little, our little city? It's national. You have people in your city, firefighters that are on duty today, they were sent to Ground Zero on September 11th. You have firefighters that are working today, they were sent to Haiti, they were sent to Nepal, they went to Japan. These are firefighters that are in these red trucks right now, in your community, helping you, that went nationally, went worldwide, and helped save people's lives. And they take that experience, and they bring it right back here. So, not only when the mayor was talking about being nationally recognized, you have people working in your community that work on the national level for you today, right now. You have an individual, Robert Harris, who's another chief I work with, he is part of the team that went to Nepal and saved people. You have Gino Ramirez, he's the number-one truck captain in the county, he trains all the other firefighters in Southern California, and he's the guy that goes up on the roof. He's the one that is cutting the holes that prevent, that gets the smoke out, to help the firefighters get in and rescue people. Number-one guy, he's right here in Inglewood. So, I want you to, it's good to be part of this type of community, we're glad to be here. Perhaps there might be some questions? If there are, I can do my very best to answer them.
Did you also want to acknowledge, maybe I missed it, on the announcement of the Hispanic-Latin CERT training?
Yes, thank you very much, yes.
Please do that.
There we go. Well, in an effort to be bilingual and able to serve the community in all the languages that we speak in this community, we also have the training on February 6th, 13th, and the 20th. Once again, in Spanish, is the flyer on the deck back there, so that not only for the community that predominantly speaks Spanish, we can accommodate that also. Thank you.
Let's give my hand, and we'll take questions or comments. See anyone? See none? Well, let's give the battalion chief another hand, thank you very much. Well, did you get anything out of this?
Yes.
Or will you share this information with your friends, neighbors, and loved ones? There's more stuff, there's more items there at the table, please reach out and grab those, if you would please? Well, it's been my pleasure to have this District Four Town Hall meeting, it's been my pleasure, but more importantly, please thank my council assistant when you leave. There's, it takes a lot of time, effort, to make this thing happen, I'm reaching out to you to say, yes, we can. So, on that happy note, God bless you all, the meeting's officially adjourned. Thank you very much.[1777.23]